Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, June 16th. It is 7:00 PM and this is the Moscow City Council Regular Meeting that I am opening. And I'll turn it over to Tom for a minute here.
Yep. Well, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out what a great weekend we had with Flag Day on Saturday and nice celebrations downtown in Friendship Square and the fun parade and fireworks display in Genesee at Community Day. I think it was just a great weekend to celebrate the flag and the country. So with that, I'd like to just say the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tom. Before I move on to the consent agenda, I just want to make an announcement. Walter Seed, our council president, is not with us tonight. He's recovering from a surgery that he had last Monday. Walter, I know you're watching us out there, so we're all excited for you to give us a few tips on how we look in front of the regular television. And so you can report that to us all, and we're excited about that. But anyway, Walter, get well soon. We know you're in a speedy recovery. We all look forward to working with you very soon. With that, I'll move on to the consent agenda. Dan?
Your honor, I'd make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay. Dan made a motion to approve it. Art seconded it before John Wilber did, so I'll start the roll with John.
Aye.
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 Okay, and the consent agenda is approved, so we will move on to item, oh, number two, public comment and mayor's response time. This is where we allow the public 15 minutes to talk about any issue that they'd like, as long as it's not before us tonight or in front of the Board of Adjustments or Planning and Zoning. So if there's anybody who'd like to step to the podium, please do it now. Saying none, we will move on then, folks, to item three, which is a public hearing on 312-313 South Ashberry Street rezone. Michael Ray will present. Michael?
Thank you, your honor, members of the council. Before you today, we have a rezone request at 312 and 313 South Ashberry Street here in Moscow. And just to orient yourself to the subject properties, they're outlined in red at the center of your screen. We have 312 South Ashberry Street on the east side of the street. It's a little over a 6,000-square-foot parcel. You also have a 7,500-square-foot parcel, which is addressed as 313 South Ashberry, across the street from 312 to the west. You have Ashberry Street running north-south through the middle of both parcels. Third Street here to the north. You also have various residential uses, single-family, two-family, and multifamily residential uses, predominantly to the south of these properties. You also have commercial properties, which are adjacent to Third Street, have a RE/MAX, real estate office, subway, accounting office, as well as a grocery store and a used car dealership there to the northwest. Looking at our comp plan land use designation for this area and the subject properties, currently designated as urban-mixed, as long as the majority of the properties go north or to the south. You have an auto-urban commercial designation as you transition into Pullman Road there to the west. Also downtown cores within your urban commercial land use designation. So what that urban-mix designation means is that those areas are intended to provide for infill development and adaptive reuse of areas that surround the downtown area. A rich mix of residential and limited commercial uses should be promoted through the development of small urban apartments, townhomes, and two-to-three-story vertically mixed-use buildings. The urban-mixed area should provide a pedestrian connection between the University of Idaho and downtown and provide space for a variety of housing alternatives, niche retail, restaurants, artist studios, as well as personal and professional services. So looking at the zoning map of the area, you'll notice that 312 South Ashberry Street's within the motor-business zone. That's the light teal color there. You have the R4 zone to the south. And so initially, how this progressed was the applicant of 312 South Ashberry Street had submitted a rezone request to our office. During the preliminary review of that request, it was determined that the property across the street to the west, you had the motor-business and R4 zones. Basically, that motor-business zone transecting through the middle of that property, as well as the residential dwelling that's currently built on that property. And so the staff contacted the owner of 313 South Ashberry Street and received their permission in order to expand that property into the rezone area to include both parcels. And so this would be the proposed zoning map before you tonight, basically rezoning those two properties from the motor-business designation on 312 and half motor-business and R4 on 313, basically all to the multifamily residential, which is our R4 zone.
This was a classic example. When I was on P&amp;Z 12 years ago, the things we ran into where we'd have a piece of property and be two different zones going right through the middle, or a portion of it from yesteryear. And one of those things that we're slowly but surely kind of cleaning up as time goes along. Dan, you had a question yet?
Yeah, I'm looking at what's obviously a 300 address on South Lily as well.
Yeah, you got my question.
Is that, was that homeowner contacted as well?
Well, I have the code for you right here that explains that. So in a portion of our zoning code, we have a section that basically states, "Where a district boundary line appearing on the Moscow zoning map divides a platted lot, which was in single ownership at the time of the passage of this chapter, the requirements of the less restrictive zoning district shall apply to the whole thereof, provided that such extensions shall not include any part of such lot more than 30 feet beyond a zoning district boundary line." So basically, that line there is 20 feet in width. And so the existing zoning covers that. And so we basically just apply the R4 zone, and that's allowed through the zoning code. And so we didn't see, we didn't see an issue with that one. But the one at 313, as you can see, it's probably about 40 to 50 feet in the motor-business. So we had an issue there. But the other one on Lily, we don't.
Okay. Thank you.
Tom?
So just to follow up with what Dan's asking, so you did not contact the landowner. It just wasn't necessary?
It wasn't necessary to contact the landowner on that property, no.
It just looks so untidy that the line goes through. Well, it's because the R4 applies.
Yeah. You can automatically just assume that the R4 would go up to that property line.
Yeah, we got that. Thanks.
Other questions for Mike?
Yeah, I do. In the application, there was a filing fee of $620 that the applicant had to pay, correct?
Correct.
And what about the other property to the east, where it's getting, as an effect of that application, is also going to be a recipient of being rezoned properly?
Sure. Yeah, I had contacted the owner of that parcel at 313, and I asked if that was all right with the applicant that had submitted the original rezone proposal, and she was fine with that at the time. And so that's when we proceeded forward.
I understand that, but my question is, was Ms. Maggie had paid $620 to file this, but the other party is getting the same effect, the same benefit of a rezone at no cost? And I don't want to get in trouble with staff by saying this, but I'm questioning where the fairness is, that she had to pay $620 to get this cleaned up, where it was the city that made the mistake to begin with. Am I correct in the fact that the city made that mistake in the actual rezone? Or are we back on the premise that, at the time it was rezoned, the assumption was that the business district was going to move in that direction, in a southerly direction?
Well, we had no issue with this up until about 1991. And that was the point where we required residential uses within the motor-business zone to go through a planning and development, or else they weren't allowed. And so up until that point, they were basically allowed, you know, all motor-business zone throughout the city. It was pretty much the ultimate mixed-use zone, because it allowed almost all commercial uses, as well as all residential uses. And so those large rezones on like the West A Street corridor, North Main, those were probably permitted underneath that zoning at the time, because we allowed all those residential uses in the motor-business zone. And so, you know, if you're just looking at two parcels, I don't think we would initiate a city-initiated rezone at that point. It'd have to be a larger corridor. But we just recognized, you know, we probably hadn't looked at this one previously to Ms. Maggie submitting the rezone request. And so, you know, we thought, under the zoning code, it's in our power to expand that rezone area when we see fit. And so, you know, looking at this two-parcel analysis, we ended up expanding that area. Now, if this affected a whole corridor and 20, 30 properties, then we probably would have identified that earlier on and done a city-initiated rezone like we had done on North Jackson Street, West A Street, North Main Street. But those are all similar in that one applicant had submitted a rezone application, and we thought it was in the best interest to expand it to that larger area.
Makes sense. I don't have any other questions. I'll have some comments, but later.
Okay. Anything else before I open it up?
I still, I still smart.
Oh, you still have to present. Sorry. We were, we were ready to chop you off, Mike, so go ahead and continue.
I skipped to the end. We're just going through the R4 zone, so once again, the proposals from the motor-business zone to the R4 zone. Looking at what the R4 zone speaks to, it's intended to provide for the most intense residential land use as permitted in the community. It is to be applied where activity levels are high and adequate public facilities are available, especially near the University of Idaho campus or the city central business zoning district. Adequate transportation access should be given high priority in determining the appropriate location for those R4 zones. So looking at the allowed uses within the R4 zone, basically you have single-family, two-family, multifamily, as well as up to 2,000 square feet of professional office uses. So a little bit of a mixed-use zone. Looking at what the professional office is defined as, its offices maintained and used as a place of business conducted by persons engaged in the healing arts for human beings, such as doctors, dentists, engineers, attorneys, architects, accountants, and persons providing services utilizing training in and knowledge of the mental discipline as distinguished from training in occupations requiring mere skill or manual dexterity of the handling of commodities. That brings us to a recommendation before you tonight. Wanted to remind you that the City of Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission conducted a public hearing on the proposed rezone, and that happened on May 28, 2014. They recommended approval to city council with no conditions. I'd also like to note that the applicant did attend one Historic Preservation Commission meeting to basically present the historical value of the dwelling that's constructed on her property. And the Historic Preservation Commission ended up writing a letter on her behalf, speaking to that historic value of the structure. And so that's attached to your packet tonight. And with that, staff recommends that the council conduct a public hearing upon this proposed rezone. And upon consideration of any testimony presented, approve the proposed rezone ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that they be read by title and published by summary. With that, I certainly will answer any questions that you might have.
Any other questions for Mike? I think we're ready to go. Mike, thank you. I will officially open a public hearing as of now. Is the applicant, Ms. Maggie, here? Would she like to present? Would you like to come forward, ma'am, and state your name and address, please?
I'm Maria Maggie, and I live at 312 South Ashberry Street. I read somewhere that it's best to leave a place when you still love it and feel thankful for all the gifts it's given you. I would add that it's best to try and leave a place better than I found it. I guess that's why I'm here tonight. In the 117 years of its life as a residence, my house has been drawn in and out of zones and districts. When I discovered it was suddenly located in the center of the new legacy Crossing Urban Renewal District several years ago, I started to pay attention to what that might mean. As some of you who were on the council back then may remember, my attentions first took public form when I spoke out against a rezone of the east side of South Almond to commercial status. Although I did not succeed in changing the tide, I waxed lyrical about the need for trees and neighbors, and how the people who actually live in the district put the residential in residential. I was assured my block would not suffer the same fate as South Almond. We all, including Bill Belknap, assumed that, like the rest of South Asbury, it was R4. Because it didn't matter 20 years ago when I bought the house, I had forgotten its status in motor-business. But the banking crisis of recent years has made its future quite precarious unless it is rezoned. Now that I understand that fully, I did not hesitate to do what I believe is right for the future of the property and the neighborhood itself. In the last few years, I have also spoken up and walked the district to talk to my neighbors in support of the new Lillian Otteness Pocket Park and the need to keep Gormley Park as a city park. It was a pleasure to talk to neighbors I knew and meet new ones, and have everyone agree it's important to have green spaces in the district. So I guess you could say I've been a crusader for the quality of life of the Legacy Crossing Urban Renewal District amidst the dramatic transitions occurring in it. Ironically, that effort is culminating in the need to speak up for my own house. But life is pretty funny that way. Perhaps there is a reason I was born the same year these two pieces of property, mine and the one across the street, were sloppily zoned into motor-business. Whatever the motivation, it was decided in a time when the exact nature of that designation carried much less ominous weight than it does today. I didn't mention this specifically in my comments at the Zoning and Planning Commission public hearing, but I am happy to have 313 South Asbury included in this rezone. Before buying 312, I once lived at what would later be affectionately named Yellow House by the groups of students who lovingly lived in it after Eric Cookman repainted it that color. It was even given a sign with its name in the form of a round old, round of old tree, which stands on its side with the words "Yellow House" burned into it and painted, of course, yellow. It is from the vantage point of its front upstairs bedroom that I first dreamed of buying the little blue house across the street, even though it wasn't for sale, and at the time, I had no plans or money saved to buy a house. But one day, as I was staring at it instead of grading my papers, I found myself saying out loud, "That's such a cute little house. I wish that house was for sale." And three days later, it was. I took that as a sign that I had better find a way to buy it, and I did. So even before it was Yellow House, 313 was the place where I first experienced how these two properties are the residential bookends of South Asbury. They may be old, but their structures are sound and charming, and the spirits that must protect them seem strong. I believe Eric Cookman bought 313 back from the city after Florence Holliday died and left it to them in a state of serious neglect and disrepair. It seems to me that each time these properties veer on the edge of someone else's idea that their time is up, circumstances turn in their favor as homes. They are now, thankfully and rightfully, both zoned out of the floodplain, too. Most of all, it is my pleasure to stand up for the little blue house that has sheltered me and helped me raise my son and grow a garden and come to learn how to heal and manage a serious illness successfully. I think my request meets the criteria you need to follow, but I'd be happy and honored to answer any questions you have about why I am seeking this rezoning. Thank you for your time and careful attention to helping preserve the future of these intact old properties and their place as a cornerstone of what makes South Asbury the truly mixed residential block we all want it to be.
Thank you, Ms. Maggie. Does anybody here on the council have questions for Ms. Maggie before I move on? Thank you. If something comes up, we'll get you back up here.
Okay.
I will take testimony in favor of the applicant for this rezone at this time. Or I will take general comments and/or disapproval at this time as well. General comments are fine. Please come up, state your name and address. Oh, Jesus.
Victoria Silver, 121 North Lily. I spoke at P&amp;Z in favor of this rezone. I'll just mention that I've lived there as a renter before I owned my home, which is just a few blocks away. And I agree that it's the bookends or the cornerstones of that area and very compatible with what's there and should be there. And I might say, old isn't bad. My house was built in 1937, and old houses have a life, and a very long life, as do people. And I like my gray hair, and I like old houses. So go for it.
Thank you. Additional testimony, general or otherwise? Saying none, I will close the public hearing and move on. John?
Well, having heard this three times now and agreeing with it every time, I would make a motion that we put the properties 312 and 313 Asbury and rezone them into R4 instead of the motor-business and motor-business and R4, and to go along with all of the suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that it be read by title and published by summary.
I could ask for a point of clarification. So, John, do you intend that the proposed ordinance in the packet is the one that you wish to have approved?
Yes.
Just want to make sure. Thank you.
I'll second that. Okay, John made a motion to approve the rezone. Ordinance? Rezone ordinance, that's correct, and the suspension of rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that they be read by title and published by summary. Tom, second that motion. Any discussion before I take the roll? Wayne?
Just want to comment that I think it's really interesting that the interest that everybody seems to have in their own neighborhoods, you know, I sit on the Historical Preservation Commission, and we do a lot of talk about Fort Russell District. Everybody that's so proud of the Fort Russell District. But I'm pleased that you folks take the interest that you do in your neighborhood, too. And that neighborhood that you live in is just as important as the Fort Russell District, as far as you're concerned, and probably more important since you live there. So I just, I think that's an interesting observation.
Art?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I'm very much in favor of this as well, partly because it removes non-conformities that were inadvertently created way back when. And also, these lots definitely don't deserve a motor-business designation due to their size and distance from a major road, which puts them out of range of what motor-business should be. And I think it preserves a nice residential feel to the rest of the neighborhood. So I wanted to add that part to the record.
Okay. Tom?
I just wanted to say that I also support this. I think it's a good idea to make sure that we're preserving that residential area. And I'm also touched by the pride that the applicant and the various testimony we've heard tonight for that neighborhood. I think it's great.
Well, with that, I'll start the roll with Art. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Five to zero, and you, I will read this, of course.
Oh, wait for you to read it. So it's your, I'm doing the next thing.
Okay, you're doing the next thing. Ordinance, what number is this, 08?
2014-10.
10, okay. This is ordinance 2014-10, an ordinance of the City of Moscow, Idaho, municipal corporation in the state of Idaho, providing for the zoning of approximately 13,785 square feet. A property described in Section 1, multiple-family residence, R4, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable and providing that this ordinance to be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval and publication according to law. Dan?
Since, I'll get the next step here and make a motion that we go ahead and accept the relevant criterion standards as put forth by the Planning and Zoning Commission on June 11 regarding this rezone.
I'll second that.
Okay, Dan made the motion. I'll let Wayne have his second on this, to approve the relevant criteria, the same as was brought before from planning and zoning. I'll start the roll, John.
Aye.
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 Okay, and the relevant criteria passed by the zero-two, so. Wayne, question?
No.
Public hearing's done.
There we go. Now, if I can have the floor for a moment, Mr. Mayor?
You can have the floor.
Thank you. This is a little bit irregular, but I am concerned about the $620 that Ms. Maggie had to pay to move this forward. Number one, there's another lot that took, was able to take advantage of this and get properly rezoned because of her initiation of this rezone. And this rezone had to be done because of a process that the city went through a number of years before. So never done, in seven years, I've never done this, and I've never seen anybody do it, but I'm going to make a motion that council direct staff to refund the $620 filing fee to Ms. Maggie.
If I may, that is not on the agenda for consideration tonight. I'm sorry.
I said it was irregular.
Unless there's a, if there's a good faith reason for doing so, that can certainly be brought up at the next committee meeting and discussed, if you like.
Which, Public Works Finance or Adnan?
That'd be fine, since it's a financial matter. Be happy to discuss that. Don, I'm sure, has a policy statement he'd like to make in that. And we can do additional research to find out how it came about. So.
Okay, I think, I think it's fitting to do that, so I would suggest that we move forward that and put it on Public Works and Finance for the next, have Don do the presentation for that.
I have the agenda right here. Thank you.
How's that sound? That sounded great. How's that, Wayne?
Well, I don't know. I've never, ever had a motion die for lack of a second. And I'm actually glad it did this time, because we got it forward to Public Works.
Your motion died, sir, but I don't think that's a bad thing, because you may have an opportunity to bring it up again here pretty soon.
Yep.
Okay, we'll move on, and thank you, Michael. We will move on now to item number four, Authorization of Department of Environment Qualities, DEQ loan for the City of Moscow, water improvements in the amount of $4.3 million. Don Palmer is going to give us a briefing on how this whole thing works. Don, you have the podium, sir.
Thank you. We started this in a rate study where we needed to finance some projects and $4.3 million, well number 10 for 2.7, and 1.6 for six distribution booster stations. That began on April 29 through the judge, and he's authorized that, to submit that, so that we were able to go ahead and finance it. And then, prior to that, we had, or consequently, we were approved for a DEQ loan for $2.7 million, which is much, much better than a rate we would get through any bank. Subsequent to that, we were able to go ahead and add to the 2.7, $4.3 million in DEQ financing, further adding to the savings that we would have gotten otherwise through a bank. And that, that amount of savings is anywhere from $355,000 to $535,000 for the additional $1.5 million. So I'm recommending the approval of this resolution. What the resolution will do for us is, once it's approved, is that it sets up the approval of the loan offer. It approves the form of the bonds, which is something that we must do, revenue bond, due to the Revenue Bond Act. And then the delivery of the bonds, or delivery of the documents to DEQ. And then lastly, it author, the resolution sets forth the authorization for signatures to, from the mayor and public officials from the city to execute the documents. So that's what the resolution does.
Gary?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment that, appreciate Don's efforts on this. As you know, we had the original DEQ loan for the development of well number 10. We made inquiry to see application, if we could also get a loan for the booster stations. It turns out that that second application after inquiry wasn't necessary, and they extended the loan amount to cover the booster stations, which, as Don said, saves an incredible amount of financing money, as well as the initial cost of the setup of the bond. So I just wanted to thank Don, less for his work on this, that really is resulting in a significant savings for ratepayers in the development of this well and these booster stations.
Well, one of the things I'll say is a 2.25% rate over a 20-year period, a few years down the road, we're going to look at that and say, man, what a marvelous thing happened to us. Because if you can finance something for that, it's almost unprecedented, in my view.
I calculated in the CCSR that the savings is an additional over a million dollars, depending on the rate that we would receive. But I had preliminary estimates that, instead of two and a quarter, it'd be anywhere from four to four and a quarter percent.
That's, it's an absolute terrific rate. I've never heard of a rate that low. I've never heard of a rate that low, but I know, and so that's terrific.
It is considered a part of the federal grant process, even though it flows through DEQ, so we will have to do a single odd act as a result of the monies, but it is a great deal.
And Don, thank you and your staff for searching that out and finding it. That's terrific for everybody that's a ratepayer here in Moscow. That's terrific. Questions for Don? John?
No, not a question.
But question.
Wayne?
Don, on this, the 4.3 million, where this is going to be a revenue bond, how does that affect our normal bonding capacity?
Well, this is a revenue bond, so it doesn't impact the geo-debt portion of it.
Okay.
It still has the same kinds of covenants that we would need, meet with regards to bond capacity. And so, we'll be monitoring that throughout the deal. But what's nice about this DEQ financing that I did not mention is that unlike other bond proceeds, you get the money upfront and then you spend it as you go. With the DEQ financing, what's really cool is that it's like a draw request. You spend the money, you draw it down, and then you don't actually incur the final bond act until the project's completed, and then we start paying it back. So, I was a little bit fearful of, you know, the funding mechanism, because we would have all this money and not have it spent for two years, two and a half years. So, this works out great, so...
Good deal.
Dan?
Well, unless somebody else really has something they really got to say, I'd make a motion that we adopt the attached resolution accepting DEQ financing and authorizing execution of documents.
I would second.
Hey, John, or Dan made a motion to approve the recommendation and attached resolution accepting the DEQ financing and authorization, execution of the documents. John Weber seconded that motion, and I'm just going to go ahead and start with Art.
Aye.
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 Okay, and that passed five to zero. Thank you, Don, very much.
Thank you very much.
Well, we're moving on here, folks. This is going to be kind of a quick session for us tonight, a light order, but we'll go into reports. Dan, you got anything?
If I may? The number of that resolution is 2014-13. Yeah.
Resolution, thanks, sir. Dan?
Yeah, I sat in for Walter as Chair of Public Works and Finance, and it was almost as short as this meeting, so, like I say, everything's been met as far as that. We're moving forward with some more information, as in the consent agenda with the Southeast Moscow Water and Sewer District, to see what, how we want to continue that relationship. I also had a meeting with the 1912 Development Committee where they opened bids on refacing the south, the west and, or east and south sides of that building, and those bids came in pretty low, so they're hoping to get some funds raised and move, they'll get the east side done, and they're hoping to get the south side done as well. I also met with the Tree Commission, and a lot of talk there about having some, an informational booth at the Republican Convention that was this last weekend, and then the Democratic Convention this next weekend, you know, just trying to catch as many people as they can that'll be meandering around Friendship Square. And then, met with the Arts Commission, and the big focus there was, of course, Art Walk, which was last Friday, and I think even with the sketchy weather, it was still a pretty good success, so, and that's all I've got.
Very good, Dan. Tom?
Well, we did not have an administrative committee this, this last week, so I don't have anything to report on that. I was part of a group of people that attended the Inland Northwest Partners Meeting. We had some great presentations about health care and the economy on the Palouse, some discussion about the impact of hospitals, doctors, and other medical folks on, on the economy of our area. We, it closed out, the meeting closed out with an interesting presentation by the WSU President, talking about some interest that they have in exploring medical school options in the Spokane area. So there were some, some, I think, pretty nice, nice topics, nice presentations. The Fair and Affordable Housing Commission met the next day. I attended that. There were some presentations by some survey people that were doing some work, looking at perceptions of housing in Moscow and whether or not people feel, how fair people feel housing is made available to people within the city. The, this last week, there were all sorts of things that, that happened primarily on Thursday. There was a MedStar open house that several of us attended at the airport. We got to look inside one of the helicopters and one of the airplanes to see what that might look like, and I think the consensus among everybody that was at the, at the, at the open house was that we're all lucky to have them there, and we all should buy the insurance that would cover the cost of any of us having to fly up there. Because a $27,000 one-way flight to Spokane doesn't seem like an appealing amount of money to spend when you can spend a lot less per, per year to insure against that. And then, I attended a climate change rally or presentation in downtown, in Friendship Square on that Thursday evening after that. So, that was, and of course, as I said earlier, Genesee Community Day, there, there was a really great presentation in singing for the flag on Flag Day on, at Friendship Square on Saturday. So, lots of great things going on in Moscow.
Very good. John?
We had a very short meeting on the Urban Renewal Agency to, that used the staff of the City of Moscow to help bridge the timeframe, the time gap between Jeff leaving and the new director coming on. The city was kind enough to allow Gary to be the interim director and then to use some of the other city staff to do some of the things that needs to be done, and that process will move along essentially as quickly as it can, so we can get another URA director and city development director on staff as quickly as possible. And the Human Rights Commission meets tomorrow, so I have nothing on that. And the other thing was planning and zoning, and there were probably just two things that were of any note. Some of it was handled here in the meeting. The rezone of the property was taken care of, and then the, there was some correspondence. Professor from the university was asking about the possibility of a class project concerning a survey about the ADU thing that we, that the people on the planning and zoning have been discussing. And there was also some conversation about long-range, long-range questions about public perception concerning, concerning climate change. That might also be involved in a class project. And then, there was a review of the mobile, or a start of the review of the mobile food vending ordinance research, and apparently, they want to do a survey that includes the people that are involved in the food vending, in the mobile food vending businesses that might be affected as to where they park and that sort of thing. That will probably happen later on this summer, early fall. Other than that, you've got what I've got.
Thank you, John. Wayne?
Well, on the 4th, LEDC, the Economic Development Council, met, and there was a discussion and the nomination of board members for the coming year. The new officers will be elected in July. There was continued discussion on the Clearwater Economic Development Association's offer to provide a three-quarter time position through their organization. However, the general feeling of the board for LEDC was that this was not the direction that LEDC would like to go, and so with that decision being made, a search committee has been established for three-quarter time project, director for LEDC. On the 11th was the meeting of Farmers Market Commission, and they continue to be very energized and doing an excellent job, I think, in, in moving forward and addressing comments and perceived problems that there may be. They had continued discussion on the free speech wall and how people with petitions may present them, and they do have to use the free speech wall. Discussion also on how to arrange food vendors so there's better crowd or line control, and how, or if it's possible to group them all in one area. There's a couple of food vendors that are getting quite a, quite a following, and so there's getting to be quite a line, which kind of disrupts the flow within the farmer's market a little bit. That's a good thing, I think, but it's just a matter of organizing. And then, let's see, on the 14th, we had the New Bill Safety Fair, Saturday the 14th, and of course, Dan was there with the fire department. I spent the day there with the police department, working with the child safety seats and the helmets and the kids, and, and that was actually quite a lot of fun. Though, I want everybody to remember that this Saturday is the beginning, is the first opening day of the Palouse Knowledge Quarters, be the Entrepreneur Boot Camp. It starts on Saturday, the 21st, at Banyon's, and then through Sunday, then Monday, at the sub-ballroom, is the keynote dinner and speaker, and that will, this will continue on through Wednesday. This looks like it's going to be a very, very successful first-year program for PKC. It's really been coming together well with a lot of instructors, a lot of mentors, and a significant number of campers that have come in. So, this is, this is going to be a really good benefit, I think, to the area. And that is all I've got.
Art?
Well, both of my committees gave very nice reports at the last city council meeting, but subsequent to that, there was a meeting of the Paradise Path Task Force, and they're still working on further identification of the orphan paths, which are essentially rights of way owned by the city connecting various other roads and pathways, getting those identified for potential use, and they will actually begin putting up some orphan path signs starting in July over some that have already been identified. They're scheduling some workdays at various spots along the Paradise Path, specifically the Berman Creekside Park. And per the presentation we had last time, they're moving forward to try to identify funds for the hydrologic study that would be necessary for the undercross at White Avenue and Highway 8. So that's what they're up to. John took my glory on the URA Sustainable Environment Committee meets tomorrow, so that's all I have.
Okay. I'll go on with reports on, and actually, Wayne, the New Bill Safety Fair was June the 7th. I don't want to correct you, but that was...
Was the 7th?
It was the 7th. I was there as well.
Oh, you're right. That was a week ago last Saturday. You were there.
Yep, absolutely, and there was some real highlights, one of them being 800 helmets, safety helmets they had for kids. They gave out 770 and all but 30. I mean, this thing continues to grow, and that was fabulous. Our own chief of police was spearheading that with a number of other officers, as well as our reserve officers that are on our force, and that was an exciting thing to see, as well as the fire department and others. And I got a chance, Tom, to see MedStar there and, and got a chance to look at their operation and talk with the lady, and that, and that's a wonderful thing for our community to be able to have that out of the airport. I, as well as Tom, I was at the Inland Northwest Partners as well, and one of the interesting speeches was given by Dr. Floyd, and a pretty amazing talk that he had. We have an airport board meeting coming up next week, and I will have some other things to discuss about that at our next council meeting. Gary, you got some reports. We're going to head to AIC. There's a bunch of us going to that. Would you like to elaborate on that, Gary?
Yeah, I was just going to comment that we have a couple of council members, the mayor, myself, and a couple of staff members going down to the Association of Idaho Cities Conference. The city attorneys are also meeting. The Redevelopment Association of Idaho is meeting, so on and so forth. At that time, there will be election of officers for the coming year, and the City of Moscow's delegate for that role is Mayor Lambert. So, we'll be available by telephone if you need us, but other than that, everything should be fine.
With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Well made. Well, I'll second it.